Pursuant to Article Nine, Section Sixteen of the Constitution of the Federated States of Micronesia and Title Three, Section Two Oh One of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia as set forth in the official rules of procedure of the FSM Congress, I hereby call the Twenty-Third Congress of the Federated States of Micronesia, Special, Second Special Session to Order. May I ask the Sergeant-at-Arms to please escort Senior Pastor Reverend Midian Ness to the podium. Secretary-General of the United Church of Christ, Pompey. May I ask that we all rise and bow our heads for prayer. Almighty and merciful Creator, we gather here today as elected representatives of our Twenty-Third FSM Congress, Second Special Session, seeking your guidance and wisdom in our deliberation of our legislative measures. Grant us the courage to uphold justice and equality with compassion and understanding for those we serve. May our decision be guided by truth, integrity, and common good. Bless our efforts to work together in unity and respect, with open hearts and minds, to listen and learn from one another. Listen more and speak less. May your light shine upon us as we navigate the challenges before us. We pray for your strength, patience, and discernment in the face of adversity, and for your grace to guide us toward solutions that will benefit or that will benefit all. May our words and action reflect your love and compassion for humanity. In your holy and mighty name, we pray. Amen. Please be seated. Thank you, Reverend Ness. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Senator Abella Alfonso.
Aye, my.
Senator Arretoz.
Yes.
Senator Christian. Senator Figuer. Senator Golan. Senator Conman.
Good morning.
Floor Leader Lawrence.
Aye, my.
Senator Nemea. Vice Speaker Romelow.
Aye, my.
Senator Urosamal. Speaker Moses.
Aye, my.
Mr. Speaker, nine members are present.
Thank you for that. We have a quorum. Please note that the two members absent this morning, Chairman Rusmout is on the island of Satavol, left there without any transportation back in time for session, so he is excused. And the Chairman Golan is out for medical reasons, so he's excused. We will now go down to the next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We're now on item number four. Please note that item number four is divided into two main parts, and the first part is on the special order for today's session.
The first item at hand is the credentials of the at-large Senator-elect from the state of Koshai. And I will now appoint the Committee on Credentials, which will be chaired by Chairman Nimea of the state of Chuk, member Madam Chair Abilio Alfonso, Chairman Figuer, state of Yap, and also Vice Speaker Romelow, will constitute the Committee on Credentials for the Senator-at-Large elect from the state of Koshai. We will now take a short recess so that they can break out into their caucus and come back with their report. Short recess. Congress is back in session. Let the record reflect that Chairman Golan has joined us for today's session. We now have ten members present. And the next item on that particular, Item Four, is the presentation of the report. So Chairman Nimea, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Your Credential Committee had made its findings and recommendations, and they are presented henceforth in the report that I will be reading verbatim. And I'll do that for the sake of transparency. Mr. Speaker, your Committee on Credentials, to which was referred the review of credentials for one member-elect to Twenty-Third Congress from the July 2023 special election, begs to leave the report as follows. On July 10, 2023, the National Election Director transmitted to Congress a premature certification of partial results of the July 4, 2023 special election. On September 12, 2023, the National Election Director certified the official results of the July 4, 2023 special election, certifying the winning candidate for the Koshai-at-large seat as Yoslin G. Segura, Koshai State four-year term seat. On September 28, 2023, Congress adopted the Credentials Committee report, finding Yoslin G. Segura not qualified to be seated in exercise of its exclusive constitutional power to be the sole judge of the elections and qualifications of its members under Article Nine, Section Seventeen. Subsequently, Speaker DeGler, the Koshai-at-large seat fagin, and the Office of National Election Director proceeded with scheduling a special election for the fagancy. On October 2, 2023, Yoslin G. Segura filed a lawsuit against Congress and the National Election Director in the FSM Supreme Court for declaratory relief and injunctive relief, alleging that Congress exceeded its powers under the Constitution when it considered factors outside the eligibility requirements under Article Nine, Section Nine of the FSM Constitution, and seeking the Court to cancel the special election. Segura versus Moses, Civil Action Number 2023 dash zero eighteen. On November 2, 2023, the FSM Supreme Court Trial Division issued an order granting declaratory relief, finding, one, the FSM Constitution commits solidly to Congress consideration only qualifications that are enumerated in the FSM Constitution or otherwise prescribed by statute, and, two, Speaker's declaration of fagancy void. On November 17, 2023, the FSM Supreme Court Trial Division granted preliminary injunction against the Office of the National Election Director to stop the November 21, 2023 election. On November 9, 2023, Congress filed an appeal of the Trial Division declaratory judgment with the FSM Supreme Court appellate division, Moses versus Segura, appellate case number P six dash twenty twenty-three, and B eight dash twenty twenty-three. On March 15, 2024, the FSM Supreme Court appellate division affirmed the Trial Division declaratory judgment and order granting injunctive relief. Your Committee on Credentials reviews the eligibility of Yoslin G. Segura to be a member of Congress following final judgment by the FSM Supreme Court appellate division in Moses versus Segura. Article Nine, Section Nine of the FSM Constitution mandates that a person is eligible to run for election to be a member of Congress if the person is at least thirty years old on the day of the election, an FSM citizen by birth, a domiciliary of the state from which elected, and residing in the FSM for at least five years prior to election. A person is eligible to be a member of Congress under nine FSM subsection one of three if, one, thirty years or older by election day, two, a resident from the state which seeking election for at least five years prior to election day, three, FSM citizen, four, not under a current judgment of mental incompetency or insanity, five, not convicted of a felony by a FSM national court, FSM state court, or trust territory government court. Your Committee reaffirms Congress's exclusive authority as the sole judge of the elections and qualifications of its members. Article Nine, Section Seventeen of the FSM Constitution dictates that Congress shall be the sole judge of the elections and qualification of its members, may discipline a member, and by two-thirds-fold may suspend or expel a member. Congress requested criminal background check on Yoslin Segura from the FSM Department of Justice, National Police, FSM Supreme Court, and its state police chief, attorney general, and state court. In a letter dated July 17, 2023, the FSM Supreme Court certified to Congress that Yoslin G. Segura did not have any felony convictions and no pardon records. In a letter dated July 28, 2023, the FSM Department of Justice, National Police certified to Congress that Yoslin G. Segura did not have any felony convictions. All state police chiefs certified to Congress that Yoslin G. Segura did not have any felony convictions. All courts certify that Yoslin G. Segura did not have any felony convictions. In a letter dated November 14, 2022, the FSM Department of Health and Social Affairs reported to the election director that the department did not have any record of Yoslin G. Segura in their mental health data records. The committee requested photo registration records and candidate documentation submitted to the Office of National Election Director to demonstrate FSM citizenship by permanent residence in the state where elected and physically residing in the FSM for the last five years. Our conclusion, therefore, in the interest of upholding the final judgment from the FSM Supreme Court appellate division in Moses versus Segura, appellate case number P six dash twenty twenty-three, and B eight twenty twenty-three, your Committee on Credentials recommends that Yoslin G. Segura be permitted to take the oath of office and be seated as a member and senator of the Twenty-Third Congress of the Federated States of Micronesia. That's the end of the report, and so I move for adoption of the report. Mr. Speaker.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. The Credentials Committee offered orally by Chairman Nimea, be adopted. Vice Speaker, you have something?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and good morning to you and esteemed colleagues. I thank the Credential Committee for its work. It was not easy. Today, for the first time, this Congress is called to refer its own decisions on admission of a member. The Credentials, the Credential Committee is now recommending admission of a member based upon the decision of the appellate level of the Supreme Court. The committee has done so because, as a member of Congress, we are first and foremost duty-bound to uphold the Constitution of the Federated States of Micronesia. So we are showing our respect to the Constitution by upholding the decision of the Court. However, I for one find that Court decision disappointing because I truly believe Congress being the sole judge of the qualification of its members, meaning that we are, no one else get to decide. And in this case, we had already decided. Be that it may, the Court has spoken. So to uphold our Constitution and ensure the smooth working of our institutions, I applaud the work and recommendations of the Credential Committee. I thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman, Vice Speaker Romelow. Any further discussion? Chairman Christian, you have the floor.
Good morning, Mr. Speaker, and I join you in welcoming all who have joined us this morning for this very important special session, especially those who have come from Koshai to join us this morning. In 1980, when I took the oath of office as a member of Congress, I swore to uphold a provision of the Constitution, provisions of the Constitution, which includes that Congress is the sole judge of anyone who would become a member. I'm a bit confused now, but like Vice Speaker, I feel that the sanctity of our Constitution has been pierced, and the very important separation of power of the branches of government has been breached. But in a democratic society like ours, we tend to listen very carefully to what the judiciary or the justices will tell us. I am more confused by the fact that, at one point, the Senator-elect in question now was removed from the bar and barred from practicing the law. But now the same Court that removed her is telling Congress that we must sit this person in spite of all the reasons that made her ineligible to practice law. So, ineligible to practice law but eligible to make laws. That confuses me as a non-attorney because I have not been able to deal into it more deeply. But my concern now is no longer the individual before Congress, but the question of separation of power and how true we are to holding our government to that great noble idea. The recommendation of Congress is that because the Court says, seat this candidate, Congress is obeying it out of respect of our common interest in a democratic society. And so today, while nothing has changed, I feel very troubled by the reversal of this Committee report. But like, like most times, I succumb to the recommendation of an appointed committee for Congress. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and that's all I have on that. I'm just worried that all the men left in Koshai will become hungry because it seems that all their wives are here in the chamber to observe this session.
Thank you, Chairman Christian. As always, we were elected to...
Move for previous questions, Mr. Speaker.
Excuse me?
Move for previous question.
Senator. There's no objection. There's a motion for the previous question, which is for the adoption of the said report in favor of the seating of Senator-elect, four-year seat, Yoslin George Segura. All those in favor of adoption of the said report say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Motion carried. Congress has adopted the report. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We're now on Item Two of the special order for today's session.
Okay, we are now on the second Credentials of the Senators-elect from the state of Koshai and from the state of Chuk. And please take note that the same members, the same chair, and members of the previous Credentials Committee on Credentials will be the same. Chairman Nimea will be the chair, members Abilio Alfonso, Chairman Figuer, and also Vice Speaker Romelow. So let's take a short recess so that you could break out into caucus and then come back with your report. Short recess. Congress is back in session. We are now on Item Four, Subsection Two, Item B, where the Committee will present its report. So Chairman Nimea, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. As is the case with the previous report, I'll also read verbatim this report for the sake of transparency. Your Committee on Credentials, to which was referred the review of credentials for two members-elect to the Twenty-Third Congress from the February 2024 special election, begs to leave to report as follows. On March 1, 2024, the National Election Director transmitted to Congress the unofficial results of the February 29, 2024 special election. On March 4, 2024, the National Election Director certified the official results of the February 29, 2024 special election, certifying the winning candidates. The members-elect are, one, Julio M. Marra, Chuk, election district number one, two-year term seat, and two, Johnson A. Hasher, Koshai election district one, two-year term seat. Your Committee on Credentials has carefully reviewed eligibility and qualifications of the elected candidates. Article Nine, Section Nine of the FSM Constitution mandates that a person is eligible to run for election to be a member of Congress if the person is at least thirty years old on the day of the election, an FSM citizen by birth, a domiciliary of the state from which elected, and residing in the FSM for at least five years prior to election. A person is eligible to be a member of Congress under nine FSM GOAT, subsection one of three if, one, thirty years or older by election day, two, a resident from the state which seeking election for at least five years prior to election day, three, FSM citizen, four, not under a current judgment of mental incompetency or insanity, and five, not convicted of a felony by a FSM national court, FSM state court, or trust territory government court. Your Committee reaffirms Congress's exclusive authority as the sole judge of the elections and qualifications of its members. Article Nine, Section Seventeen of the FSM Constitution dictates that Congress shall be the sole judge of the elections and qualifications of its members, may discipline a member, and by two-thirds-fold may suspend or expel a member. The Committee requested criminal background checks on the elected candidates from the FSM Department of Justice, National Police, FSM Supreme Court, and its state police chief, attorney general, and state court. In a letter dated April 2, 2024, the FSM Department of Justice certified to Congress that Julio M. Marra and Johnson A. Hasher did not have any felony convictions and no pardon records. In a letter dated March 28, 2024, the FSM Supreme Court certified to Congress that Julio M. Marra and Johnson A. Hasher did not have any felony convictions and no pardon records. The State Court of Yap certified to Congress that Julio M. Marra and Johnson A. Hasher did not have any criminal records. The Koshai State Record certified to Congress that Julio M. Marra and Johnson A. Hasher did not have any pending nor prior records with the State Court. Pompey State Supreme Court certified to Congress that Julio M. Marra and Johnson A. Hasher did not have any conviction records. The Office of the Attorney General for Koshai certified to Congress that there was no record of any violations of state criminal laws by Julio M. Marra and Johnson A. Hasher. Your Committee requested photo registration cards and candidate documentation submitted to the Office of the National Election Director to demonstrate to FSM citizens by permanent residence in state where elected and physically residing in the FSM for the last five years. In a letter dated January 22, 2024, the FSM Department of Health and Social Affairs reported to the election director that the department did not have any record of Julio M. Marra and Johnson A. Hasher in their mental health data records. Your Committee on Credentials finds, based on our careful review and deliberations, that elected candidates Julio M. Marra and Johnson A. Hasher meet the eligibility requirement under Article Nine, Section Nine of the FSM Constitution, and nine FSM GOAT, subsection one of three. Pursuant to Article Nine, Section Seventeen of the FSM Constitution, your Committee finds that both elected candidates are qualified to serve and be seated as a member of Congress. In conclusion, your Committee on Credentials is in full accord with the credentials of Julio M. Marra and Johnson A. Hasher. Your Committee recommends that Julio M. Marra and Johnson A. Hasher be permitted to take the oath of office and be seated as member and senator of the Twenty-Third Congress of the Federated States of Micronesia. So that's the end of the report, and so I move for adoption of the report.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt the report of the Committee on Credentials for the Senators-elect from the state of Chuk and Koshai. Discussion? Chairman Christian, you have the floor.
Yes, on page two of the Yes, on page two of the report, I would like to offer an oral amendment to the report. May I, Mr. Speaker?
Go ahead.
Last paragraph. I move that we delete the following sentence. Your committee reaffirms Congress's exclusive authority as the sole judge of the elections and qualifications of its members. I shall move, Mr. Speaker.
Short recess. Let's go back. Well, the offered oral amendment to the said report was not seconded. Therefore, it was not moved. So any further discussion on the said report? No objection? Question has been called for. All those in favor of adoption of the said report say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carried. The report on the, from the Committee on Credentials has been adopted by Congress. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We're now on item number three of the special order, and that is the administration of the oath of office.
Okay, I would like to now ask that the Sergeant-at-Arms please escort the three senators-elect along with their family members to the front of the podium and also escort in Acting Chief Justice for the administration of oath, and short recess. Congress is back in session.
All right, thank you.
Please continue.
Okay, Senator-elect Johnson A. Asher, Senator-elect Julio M. Marar, Senator-elect Yoslin G. Segura. Okay, you will take your oath of office. You will repeat after me. After you say aye, please state your name. Now raise your right hand and your left hand on your Bible. Take your oath of office. I solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the office of Senator of the 23rd Congress of the Federated States of Micronesia and will, to the best of my ability, uphold, promote, and support the laws and the Constitution of the Federated States of Micronesia. So help me God. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you, Acting Chief Justice. I would like to ask for short recess so that the Sergeant-at-Arm can escort out the family members and staff pages, please escort the members to their respective seats. Short recess. Let us go back. Before we move on any more further, I would like to ask the Chief Clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Senator Abel Alfonso.
Aye, ma'am.
Senator Aridos.
Yes.
Senator Asher. Senator Christian. Senator Figuerre. Senator Colin.
Yes.
Senator Conman. Floor Leader Lawrence.
Aye, ma'am.
Senator Marar. Senator Nemea.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Romolo.
Aye, ma'am.
Senator Segura. Senator Urosamal. Speaker Moses.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker, 13 members are present.
Thank you, Chief Clerk. With that, we have still a quorum, but 13 members, and if it weren't for the logistics, we would have had a full house today. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Point of privilege, Speaker.
Say your point.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good morning to you and good morning to all the members and everyone. I'd like to take this opportunity, first, to let the record show the dignitaries that are present with us this morning in the second special session of the 23rd Congress. I would like to begin with recognizing and welcoming His Excellency, the President of the Nation, Wesley W. Semena. Let's all please give him a round. The Vice President of the Federated States of Micronesia, the Honorable Aaron B. Palick. The First Lady, Mrs. Anseli Semena. I'd like also to recognize the presence of our Acting Chief Justice, Warswick. Let me also recognize the presence of the Kocharai State Governor, Honorable Palick. And our Pompeii State Governor, Honorable Joseph. I am also pleased to introduce or also let the record and welcome our members of the Diplomatic Corps who are, who have joined us today. I'd like to begin with Ambassador Hui, Embassy of the People's Republic of China. Ambassador Kachimia Nopu, Embassy of Japan. And Ambassador Jennifer L. Johnson, Embassy of the United States of America. And I also like to recognize some members of the Pompeii State Legislature that are with us this morning. First off is the Honorable Senator Kukouak Apis Junior. And I also would like to recognize Honorable Senator Isaac A. Artui. And I also need to recognize the spouse, or else I'll be in trouble, Mrs. Artui and their granddaughter, whose name is Snow White. There are a few that traveled and are with us to witness this morning's the opening session, and we have also coming from the Republic of the Marshall Islands, the Minister of TCNI, TCNIT, Minister Hilton Kendall. Board Member Jerry Nathan. The Executive Director of the Port of Authority, Thomas Madison. And for us, for recognition as well, from our good Chairman of the Credentials Committee, I'd like to recognize his wife, Mrs. Ela Nemea, spouse of Chairman Nemea. And the former colleagues of Chairman Nemea from the FSM Development Bank. And I just leave the rest with all the other members. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you for that. I'm kind of jealous. My, the Speaker's wife is also in the gallery, but was not recognized, but that's okay.
My apologies, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Christian, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. My wife is not here, but I just want to acknowledge that she is still married to me. Mr. Speaker, I take this opportunity with your permission to, from my seat, my desk, welcome the new members who have become members of the 23rd Congress. Just so you know, and I'm sure you do, that when there is appropriations for public projects, you will be very popular. And when there is no public projects money, you will be the scorn of your community. But welcome to Congress and look forward to working with you all.
Thank you, Chairman Christian.
Speaker.
Vice Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good morning to you and colleagues. Let me also associate myself with the previous speaker in welcoming His Excellency, President Semena, the First Lady, and the Honorable Vice President Palick and Mrs. Palick. And also to extend and welcome the new members of the 23rd Congress. I don't want to miss to introduce some important Chukis who are in the gallery. As I am an elected official, an election is around the corner next year, so I want to make sure that I'll be recognized by these Chukis. Even though they're not from Northwest, but who, we never know if I may be in the at-large seat next year, so. Let me begin by taking the indulgence of this body to recognize these few Chukis, and I apologize if I miss all the names. But I begin with the lovely wife of the newly-elected Senator, Mrs. Marar, Mrs. Rael, Mrs. Willyanter, and the other spouses. And also in the gallery, Mr. Speaker and colleagues, we have Stephen Robert, Pichy Petrus, and Grace Willyanter, and I believe also Montel Tim. So with the others that I failed to recognize, I would ask that we recognize all the Chukis in the gallery and who are tuning into social media by a big round of applause. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. Chief Clerk, next item.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Please note that we're back to the regular order. So the next item is part two of item number four, which is the appointment of committee to wait on the President.
Thank you, Chief Clerk. I will now appoint the committee to wait on the President. Chairman will be Madam Chair Abilio Alfonso. Member will be Vice Speaker Romolo. Member Chairman Isaac Figuerre, and also Member Yoslin Segura. And Madam Chair, please consult with the President so that you may get a time and venue of the meeting with the President, and short recess while you consult. Congress is back in session. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We're now on item number.
Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Christian.
Mr. Speaker, thank you very much. There are a few events that Congress have, and this, what we had this morning was one of the most solemn, and that is the swearing-in of members. And so as not to stain the solemnity of that occasion, I move that we recess until tomorrow at 10:00.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress stand in recess until tomorrow at 10:00, and before we vote, Madam Chair Abilio Alfonso, would you like to care to announce your scheduled meeting with the President?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The Committee to Wait on the President will be meeting with His Excellency and Vice President at 1:00 p.m. today. So if there may be other issues that the rest of my colleagues may want to bring up for us to bring to the attention of the President, please do so before 1:00 p.m. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members, please take note, if you have some time, maybe we could meet in the Members' Lounge if anybody cares to to have some issues being taken down to the President. Okay, we have that motion. All those in favor of the said motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress stands in recess until 10:00 a.m. tomorrow.